My, my thing says 11:01. Isn't my iPad like the perfect time? Probably Greenwich Mean Time. Okay, good morning, everyone. As you've seen from all of the materials that you read, hopefully not on Mother's Day, that we have a very full day today. So Dan and I, we're going to try to keep us on track to our timeframes. And we know that there'll be certain areas where people might want information, but we'll parking lot things that we need to deal with later. And a perfect, perfect example of that is the Instructional Program, OE. There are many, many issues in, in Issues and Trends section. Today isn't the meeting where we're going to delve into detail of that. But if there are certain areas where board members need more information, then we'll parking lot that and find out if we need to have a work session or a memo from the superintendent to get that information. And I don't know if Dr. Garza wanted to add anything before we begin with Dr. Presidio.
Yeah, I think you put it very well. I think there might be a tendency because this OE report is very broad. And any one of these particular programs, we could really, we probably could spend hours just on any one of them. In some cases, you've had reports on very specific programs that can be touched on today. And you have advisory committees that are scheduled sometime in June, I think, touch on some of them as well. So I agree with you, Ms. Smith. I think probably we're going to have to refrain, if we can, help ourselves to not, because we have so many things on the agenda today, not to get into the, the detail of any specific program. But we certainly are very happy to follow up, as you said, you know, if there's a particular area that the board would be interested in going into deeper. So, thank you very much for that kind of overview.
Thank you. So I'm going to put the motion on the table. What we're going to do is let our staff members do their presentation, and then we'll open it up for questions. And we're going to focus on the questions at first in Area 1, 2, and 3, the effectiveness, the efficiency, and the customer satisfaction, and make sure we get those questions out of the way first. So I move to accept the Instructional Program Operational Expectations Monitoring Report. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Velkoff. Dr. Presidio.
All right. Well, thank you and good morning. It's nice to be back at the table here. We haven't talked about instruction in a while. And as you know, the Instructional Program, OE, is really a collaboration across several departments, ISD, DSS, PLA, and even our Finance and Business Office. So you'll probably hear from multiple LT members as part of this presentation. So, in the interest of time, what I'm going to plan to do is just go through not every single individual measure, but just the ones that really are highlighted in terms of their status being in the watch status. And we may highlight a couple other measures that we think have particular importance as well, but we're going to just try to highlight just a few of these for you. So what I'd like to do is start with effectiveness. And the first measure is asking us to review student achievement data on an annual basis and initiate supports to ensure that students can achieve at the board's student achievement goal level. And as we reported in the fall, you'll remember with the Student Achievement Goal 1 report, we talked about the 90% performance target that we've set for student achievement in the division. And many of our students are not meeting that 90% target. In fact, with the introduction of new state standards, performance over the last several years has slipped and the achievement gap has widened. And as a result, we've initiated a number of new projects to really try to support student achievement. The first one is a multi-tiered system of support to schools. And with this, what we're really trying to do is streamline supports to schools, recognizing that every school has unique student achievement needs. Some schools might just need basic information about how the standards have changed, how the testable topics for the SOL have changed. They might need help with the new electronic navigation, computer adaptive testing. Other schools, however, might have new principals, they might have new staff members, and they might need more help actually implementing division programs like our literacy and math program with more fidelity. So the intent of this program is to really try to ensure that we can expedite and streamline services to schools based on their individual needs, working with principals and cast members to determine how best to do that. The second major project here is our Closing the Achievement Gap project. We've updated that project in the past. It was really more of a collection of district or division-wide initiatives. And what we know to be true is that in times of limited finance, we need to be very intentional about the strategies that we undertake. So in our new Closing the Achievement Gap Plan, we focused on six major driver areas. Some of those, we have some responsibility at the division level for, of course, like our access to rigor and expanding Ready-to-Learn, pre-K initiatives. But other things like supporting student achievement and parent engagement and building healthy student-teacher relationships, we believe that there are some strategies that we can support schools with that might target and support students a little bit better than perhaps we have in the past. So that's another project that we've initiated in, in align with this measure. But this measure is yellow because we really don't know the impact of these new supports yet. And I think that it's something that we need to continue to monitor and evaluate for effectiveness at the division level. So Measure 1.2 is providing school-based staff with new and revised curriculum resources and instructional resources. And we've added quite a few resources. Over 4,000 curriculum resources have been developed this year. And those are contained in our curriculum repository, which is housed in Ecart. And we've also made adjustments to Ecart to allow teachers to post and share their own classroom-created materials across any of the schools in the division. And we've updated the search in Ecart as well to help teachers really find the materials that are the most relevant as quickly as possible. But this measure is marked as yellow because we don't have long-term funding for basal curriculum adoption, like new textbook adoptions, in the operating budget. And in discussions with schools, this is one area where I really think we need to watch and see if we can do better. I understand the budget reductions that we're making, but this is an area that I think that we need to be thoughtful and planful moving forward. Additionally, we've cut some summer curriculum development projects. And I think we need to really determine the impact of these cuts in terms of helping our students reach the student achievement goals that we've set at the board level. The third measure is around providing professional development to teachers and administrators. This one is also in the watch category. And we've taken a modified approach to professional development this year. I think you know, across the division, we set an instructional improvement focus to really focus on enhancing students' critical and creative thinking skills and the relationships with their teachers. And at the elementary level, we actually implemented a new professional development delivery mechanism as well. What we did is we recruited volunteer teachers who would be interested in facilitating instructional improvement through the CLTs, the collaborative learning teams in schools. And we had 132 teachers who volunteered to work with us and be supported to try to help further the instructional improvement focus in their own schools and through their CLTs. We also implemented a new professional development evaluation with PLA to ensure that as part of any PD session that we give, we're able to collect information from those people that participate on its effectiveness and its relevancy to the work that they do. And we've had a pretty good response rating. We have overall an 82% positive response rating, and we think that's a good start. We know that we need to do better there. But really, this measure is yellow because, again, we've got fiscal concerns. As you know, with the budget, the proposed advertised budget, we're reducing professional development. So we need to ensure that we're monitoring appropriately the professional development that we do offer to really optimize its impact. So with that, I'll turn it over to Teri.
Good morning and Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. And I'm sure all the men around the table got up and cooked their mother or their wife breakfast yesterday. So we're, we know you're maybe a little tired after doing that, but we're glad to be here. I'm going to be talking about... Their programs, set goals, talk about where their program is in the school system, and give some general, basic information about their programs. You will see that we've made it yellow, and the reason for that is because only 61% of our programs have what we call "fully-developed profiles." One of the reasons that hasn't increased to 100% is the rubric that we use to judge these program profiles is pretty rigorous. And I want to tell you a little bit about what you would have to have to have a program profile rated as "fully-developed." The first thing that you need is a narrative about that, which students are involved, which sites this program is at, how it is assessed, what materials you use, what is your focus, and what are your goals for the year. You have to have all of those things completed to a pretty high standard in order to be fully-developed. Things that can keep you from doing that might be that your program is not a perfect fit for the rubric. And that, it's hard to find one rubric that fits all 70 of our program profiles. The other thing, and sometimes if a program is just beginning, this could impede its progress to "fully-developed" if it's a process goal rather than an outcome goal. That is something that might keep you into substantially developed or underdeveloped. Another thing that could happen there is if you say this program is research-based, but you don't give the citation. So at times, it may sound kind of nitpicky, but it is a way to have a high-quality profile out there for our stakeholders. So while our number is not 100%, you know, we have made some progress. Another reason that it might not be at 100% is staff time. It does take a good bit of your time as a program manager to do this, provide the data updated every year. So while we have made progress, we did color that yellow because we want to watch that carefully. Okay, Sloan?
Okay. So if we could turn our attention then to Section 2, the Efficiency Measures, there are a couple measures that we'd like to highlight here. The first is 2.1, and this measure is asking us to annually update the division's curriculum materials in light of changes at the federal, state, or local level. And I think we do a pretty good job of responding to the ever-moving and changing targets at the federal and state level. And I think we do a good job of responding and updating to best-practice research as well. But I actually coded this one yellow because I think that we need to really watch the changes and think about the changes that we're proposing to make at the local division level here in FCPS. So for example, with the Portrait of a Graduate, as we move forward with that work, I think that we need to be thoughtful about how that may change how we measure student performance in the division. You know, of course, the attributes in Portrait of a Graduate are thinking more specifically at getting at things like critical thinking, problem-solving, reasoning, analysis. And those are not things that are easily measured with the current assessments that we use in our Student Achievement Goal Report. So I think that we've got some work to do to think about how to accurately measure student performance. And then ultimately, I think we need to think about, are we supporting teachers in the classroom to provide the kind of learning experiences that will lead to those outcomes? So for example, are we providing the flexibility for teachers to really teach in an inquiry-driven format and to teach for depth of learning and meaning-making beyond just the coverage of content standards? Are we providing opportunities for teachers to think about how to engage students in performance-based tasks? And you might think about the last board meeting that we had and the Global Awareness Technology Project is an example of the kind of problem and project-based learning opportunities that our students really love, but our teachers oftentimes don't feel that they have the flexibility and the time to provide those opportunities because of having to meet all the content standards that students are responsible for in the SOLs. So I think we just need to monitor and kind of think about how these changes at the local level might impact the work that we do here. Also, in 2, in Section 2 for Efficiency Measures, I'd call your attention to 2.6. And here, we're completing annual program reviews to think about access and capacity to our instructional programs and services. I think everybody understands that this is a very challenging area, and really, our biggest issue is space. So we're in the process right now of working with facilities to look at some long-range planning to address space issues and overcrowding in our AAP centers. And we're looking to think about how we might be able to expand capacity in our pre-K program as well. But again, those are just two programs in extremely overcrowded facilities across the division. So we labeled this yellow because we feel like we really need to watch this and see if we're able to address and mitigate any of those space issues at all.
Could I look at 2.8?
Okay. So Teri's going to take us to 2.8.
Yes. 2.8 is probably the most important thing from the accountability side of the house that you'll have before you today. If we could open up 2.8, each year, we bring to you our work plan in the Accountability side of the House. And what you see here is that plan. We do call it a plan because sometimes things change throughout the year. But I want to tell you a little bit about how this is broken up. I mentioned earlier that program profiles are the first level of accountability. The second level of accountability in the policy is comprehensive evaluation. And you will see up there that 1 through 5 list the programs that are presently under comprehensive evaluation. I've noticed since I've been over the Department of Accountability, the second area, monitoring activities, has grown a great deal. And part of the reason that has grown is because of you. And let me give you an example of that. Just recently, in the superintendent's memo that she sent you, you had one of those reports, which was about the honors courses, number 14. When you added honors courses, one of your stipulations is, or was, that we monitored that. And so what we do is, a monitoring just means that we look at the state before the change in policy, and then we report what the state of the initiative or the policy is after the policy has been interacted. So some of those things up there are things that you have seen, and we list those there. Another thing that happens, and we list, or when you get books like this, Instructional Services and Special Services and PLA, they also monitor your student achievement goals. So that's another aspect of monitoring. And then the third section, we don't know what to call it, and we didn't think miscellaneous sounded good, so we call it "technical assistance." Almost every day, we get a request for someone wanting to do research in our district. So we have a screening process for that, so we don't overburden employees, or students, or people aren't asking to do things that are unsafe for our students. And so that is an aspect that takes our attention. And then you might remember the Tipping Point Study that we brought for you. That is another area that we consider technical assistance. So in this OE report each year, you see our plan for monitoring. And that is what 2.8 is.
All right. Thank you. And Susan, are you going to speak to 2.10?
I just wanted to mention quickly on 2.10, it's running, operating a self-supporting Food and Nutrition Services Program. It is green, it is still self-supporting, and we are still able to do the $2.6 million transfer to the Operating Fund to pay for some of the indirect costs. But I just wanted to mention that a couple months ago, when I presented the Food Services Action Plan, the trend is that we are using the reserve within the Food and Nutrition Services Fund. We are drawing down that reserve probably faster than we had originally anticipated or we had planned on. So I just wanted to make the board aware that while it is still green, within the last few years, we have spent millions of dollars out of the reserve to keep the fund self-supporting.
All right. If you could turn your attention to Section 3, the Customer Satisfaction Measures, a couple that we would like to highlight here, beginning with 3.1, where we try to ensure quality and timely customer service through seeking quantitative and qualitative feedback. And we attempt to collect customer service information in a variety of ways, through surveys, through our formal organizations, like our Principals Association meetings, department chair meetings. And in general, we get pretty good feedback from schools that they have the materials necessary to really implement the Instructional Program well and help students meet the student achievement goals. But we've labeled this yellow as a watch because I really feel like we need to get better quantitative information. As I mentioned earlier, we've developed a new professional development survey tool, and that's given during the professional development experience, so it's not something extras, an extra survey that would add to a person's workload. I'm hoping that we can continue to kind of enhance this customer service feedback that we get in that way to help us really make better value judgments about the effectiveness and efficiency and relevancy of what we do. Next, I'd like to call your attention to 3.4. And this is Monitoring and Controlling Student Access to Instructional Program Materials, including electronically distributed materials. There's a lot of overlap here, I think, with the OE report that you received from DIT. But I did want to mention that it, again, is labeled yellow here because we, as a division, offer an incredibly rich array of instructional materials that are accessed digitally or electronically. And we're doing work to ensure that all students have access to those materials. The Access for All Committee, of course, is one of the groups that's really working to ensure that students have that access. But we're not at 100%, and I think that that's something that we continue, we really should continue to watch and should continue to work on.
And I believe I have the next two items, Items 3.6 and 3.7. And this has to do with student participation in both the breakfast program as well as the lunch program. And both of these have a yellow rating. And for the breakfast program, we are improving the number of participants. However, our goal is to reach 13%, and that's the regional benchmark that we wanted to be able to get to, so that's why it's yellow. But we have increased breakfast participation by 11.2% in, and at every grade level, as well as all the student population groups. Obviously, the one that increased the fastest was the free, the reduced eligible students because we're running the pilot where we are subsidizing the breakfast program for our reduced eligible students. The next item is the participation in the school lunch program. That is actually going the other direction. We are concerned about the participant, participation rates for our lunch program, but this has been the national trend since we've implemented the meals pattern in 2013. So we're working diligently, trying to promote the program and promote the various changes we made to the lunch program in order to increase participation for lunch. But at every grade level, obviously, the paying student participation has dropped. However, for, again, because we're subsidizing lunch for our reduced eligible students, the participation for that segment of our students, the, has increased from last year to 13.
Okay. So we promised the meeting managers we'd do that in about 15 minutes. It took us about 22, but that's not terrible.
Thank you. So we're going to start with any questions you have from Sections 1, 2, and 3 on the report. I'm not going to limit to say Section 1 first, Section 2 next, and 3, but keep your questions to Sections 1, 2, and 3. I have Ted first, then Iliang.
I want to be respectful of the process, so let me just make sure that I'm on board because I don't really have questions that are specific about the report, but there are questions that come to mind as I've been listening to the presentation. Is that fair game for what we're doing now, or?
Start, and if it's taken us too far down a different road, you don't mind if I interrupt?
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. So one of the things that, to me, is missing here is graphs of achievement versus socioeconomic circumstances. And Dr. Paris has brought many of those to my attention, and I'm hoping that when he leaves, that doesn't go away. I think that information is extremely helpful, and I think we should orient a lot of our presentations around that because it affects a variety of things. A question I have about the workload for teachers. And I think, this came up in the context of the Portrait of a Graduate and making sure that we aren't just adding more work to the teachers. I think this is, you know, obviously, the right way to go. But I'm continuously yearning to hear from the educators. Can you tell us what should be pulled? I think there's consensus here to do something, but, you know, be bold. And also related to that is, really, what are the questions that we, as laypeople, should be asking about instruction?
So I'm going to interrupt you there. And just remind everybody, after we have this work session on the two OEs, we're going to have a discussion in the next governance work session of how these things have to change. And I think that's a perfect time for that question because I think, in talking with Sloan and staff members, that we are going to want to make changes to these OEs and the measurements, and tighten some of it up and get to richer stuff, but that's a discussion we'll have in the next work session.
Okay. I appreciate that. So the next question I have, I'm going to delay until that because it concerns how we deal with the work plan. My last question, and I was, I was just thinking here, we had a discussion of monitoring, right, that we look for certain things and track them over time. Have we done, did we commit to doing any kind of monitoring about the effect of the grading scale changes on college admissions and scholarships and that stuff?
That came to my attention right before the work, oops, sorry. That came to my attention right before the work session, and I, some of my staff is here from the Office of Program Evaluation. We do believe there has not been a formal request of monitoring. I know that in Mary Beth's shop, their data person has looked at some things, but it's not been formally done as a monitoring report, to my knowledge. I think it'd be about four years ago.
Yeah, thank you. So this was before my time. But I'm, I guess my question is, what is the process for asking for that? I mean, do we have to have a board decision? Do I just ship my question off? What do we, what is the best way to ask for that?
Go ahead.
Just as if you had submitted an email question to me, we would, I would send it to staff, and we would develop a response. So I've recorded that, and certainly, I think, as a next step, I think we can respond to that and get it on the list.
So we're going to be really good so that people over there typing our next steps have a, have an easy time of it. So it's a question about whether there has been a monitoring report about the grading scale changes, and then is it also a request to have a report like that done?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so that is something that we will, if it's going to take staff time to make the decision of we want to report about that, we'll have to look for board consensus. Is that good, Pam? Okay. Anything else, Ted? Anything else? Okay. I have Iliang, Ryan, then Janie.
Mrs. Smith, I didn't realize that my questions and my comments for Section 2 and 3, so I could wait.
We're doing 1, 2, and 3 now.
1, 2, 3, oh, okay, good. I think all three questions go to us, Susan. You're my lucky person this morning, at least for now. On 2.10, we talked about a reserve, a declining.
Yes.
And would you be able to tell us where we should stop?
Well, you know, I think...
At which point?
Our goal was really to have three months' worth of reserve, and we've never reached that point, so.
We've never reached that point.
No. So we've had, I think at the highest point, we were at 18.8, and our goal would have been 21 million. But obviously, 21 million is there to be able to smooth out the effects of compensation, equipment needs, without having to increase our lunch prices in anyone given nearby a significant amount. So it's really the smoothing effect. So I would think at the 15, I think it's going to be a very critical year. Because that's going to, way the budget is currently developed, it's going to draw us down to almost $7 million. So that will barely cover one month of the operating expense. I think we should at least have one month of operating expenses in our reserve. We haven't been able to determine all the loss that we've experienced this year, but on those days that we're not making up, the snow days, there's a revenue loss associated with it. And obviously, we also save from not having labor costs, but we've also lost a lot of food. So we're trying to work through this year to see where we're going to end this fiscal year. But I do think how, how we do in 15 is going to be critical, so we'll have to monitor it pretty closely.
Let me just ask you a follow-up question. I'm just trying to have, you know, better understanding of what you have just told us. Is that three months, is that established nationwide?
That is something that USDA program allows you to maintain in your reserves.
Is that the recommended guideline?
It's recommended, but it's also the maximum. They don't like you to have more than three months sitting in your reserve, so we were, again, trying to work toward that. Because each time we make compensation changes to the Operating Fund, it has an impact on this fund.
And that one month, one month minimum, is that... And that one month, one month minimum, is that, where is that one month coming from? From you or office, or is that from somewhere outside we can lend our hand on and take a look and see?
If you look at the school food program throughout the country, we probably have the one of the best managed program in the country because most food programs are being subsidized by the operating fund. Whereas in our situation, we run a self-supporting program, and we pay back some of the indirect costs to the operating fund. So it's hard to say, is that a benchmark? It's hard to determine what that benchmark would be for the reserve. So to answer your question in short, yes, that would be my professional judgment that we would maintain at least one month and would have to seriously consider rerunning that operation if we were to go below the one-month reserve.
Okay. Now, let me go to section 3, 3.6 and 3.7. Both have to do with, they have to do with the breakfast and lunch program on the watch list, the yellow color. Then I think I asked similar questions last year as well, that, you know, we have certain goals in terms of percentage-wise, but I still have a hard time understanding that, you know, having lunch brought from home, bringing lunch from home versus having lunch in the school cafeteria. Is there any value judgment on that? Or even breakfast-wise? Because we set a goal, like a 50 percent for the lunch program participation.
And that goal is based on the average participation in Virginia regionally, so we were, our goal was to reach that average, right? So-
I'm just trying to understand whether, you know, reaching that goal, what does that mean? So is that a good thing to do, or is that-
Well, I guess we put this measure under customer service, saying that if we could have higher participation, our customers are more satisfied-
Satisfied.
-with the lunch program and the service that's provided through the school system. That's why that particular goal fell under customer service because I think we were trying to come up with measures without having to do surveys. So that, we thought that would be a good indication of how satisfied our students and families are with it.
And it does obviously affect the bottom line in terms of financial, you know, the finances of the program as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have Ryan, Janie, then Tammy.
So I'm glad to follow Mr. Moon on that, and I'm sorry to hijack Sloan's presentation. I think, just a quick comment on that. As you all know, we are raising the price of lunch by 25 cents, which is the first in about four years, right? And so I think, obviously, we need to be careful when we do that because we are seeing participation decline. But I think we do need to find a way to index our lunch prices to inflation because we are running in general behind surrounding jurisdictions in terms of the cost. So hopefully, as we get new options out, things will look brighter. So, I mean, that brings me to my next question is, why in the world is this included in the instructional services?
Well, actually, that would be the question we would like to ask the school board members. But it was part of the, did you want to take that over, Kathy?
I'm going to take that one over. Back in, blah, 2012, when we went over all of the OEs again, if you look at the first page of the report that lists the 12 values the board put there, we as a board changed that, and we added that to the instructional program. So that's why it's here. It was taken out of the finances and put here in instructional program. It's number 12. So that was board work. So in the next work session, if you want to talk about changes, but it is here.
Sorry, Susan, for throwing you around.
Thank you, Ryan. Janie, then Tammy.
Okay, two issues that I wanted to address is question, I guess, and statement. Looking at 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, 1.4, and we've talked about going forward, project-based learning because Sloan, you talked about our wanting to do more project-based learning. Our fifth-grade presentation spotlight on learning was just so wonderful at the last school board meeting. And our efforts to go from STEM to STEAM, and all of the above. So the question is, and I guess, I don't know how this fits into this particular report, but our need to increase opportunities for project-based learning, collaboration, and I am very interested in from STEM to STEAM. And just as a descriptor, Stewart High School play this weekend was multilingual, multicultural. They took a classic Spanish play, but anyway. It is getting to that, how do we get to that, watching another performance that had students Down Syndrome autism were there, were a part of this huge project-based learning performance opportunity. So as we are evaluating ourselves to get these yellows to be into a green, it is developing more of these opportunities. How are we going to measure it? I'm not exactly sure. But very interested in not only providing the opportunities for students, but support for staff because we talk about not just curriculum, but it is the sharing and the collaboration, particularly in many of our arts situations where you have a singleton teacher. And helping them to collaborate and stretch and work out of the box. So I'm not exactly sure how we measure it, but clearly, what we've said in Portrait of a Graduate, we say in our goals, this is where we want to go. So inclusivity, reaching out. I guess that's my one comment on that, and so I'm glad as you restated our goals and our mission of where we want to go in that direction. And the food nutrition that you were just talking about and the financial piece, as the food patterns have changed in our participation is perhaps not where we would like it. On the other side, we also know from national studies, often the children who are the least healthy and have issues with obesity tends to be related to poverty level. And so I know as part of our programs, we are trying to help youngsters expand their willingness to try new things and also offering them a more nutritious, more healthful selection of food, particularly in both the breakfast and the lunch. So on the one hand, the financial piece is tough. On the other hand, maybe we are going down, obviously, a very different road, but perhaps it is going to actually meet the overall national goal of healthier, healthier children. So those are my comments. Thanks.
Tammy, then Patty.
Good morning. Thank you all. I have a question regarding program implementation. When we had our lengthy discussion last year on the AAP programs, we talked about fidelity of implementation of programs, particularly in our math and science area in elementary school and somewhat in middle school. So exactly where does that fall in? Have we actually taken measurement of that? Is that going to be somewhere else? Because that's the one thing I haven't really been able to wrap my head around as to everything that's here. Is it a subsection of some of these, or are we, or we have not gotten there yet?
Yeah, I think that's a really important question. A couple of things I would say. One, I don't think program implementation is really captured, either in the value statements or in the measures that we currently have. So I think that that could be a discussion for, you know, the next governance committee and perhaps a work session. And I have a few ideas perhaps on how we might want to address that. Second, I would say, just overall, we have 75 programs just in the Instructional Services Department. There are other programs in DSS. I mean, you cannot manage and evaluate the implementation of all those with the kind of level of precision that perhaps we would like to. So I think you'd have to be more intentional and more strategic about which programs we would monitor, and certainly PLA helps us with that in terms of the evaluation cycle. And we have different levels of monitoring, as Dr. Breeden talked about, with program profiles being one. But to be more specific in relation to the AAP question, we did, following last year's work sessions, develop a fidelity of implementation tool. We developed a number of tools for schools to use, and we're in the process of working with schools to think about how to implement some of those tools. So there's a fidelity of implementation tool that basically, what we're asking schools to do is to evaluate, similar to how we do in some of our other programs, like the IB program, that has a very similar evaluation tool, outlining all of the principles and practices that we would want to see as part of that program, and then evaluating at the school level where you are on that continuum of implementation, with the understanding that in the process of continuous improvement, particularly in large, complex programs that are multi-dimensional, and when you talk about AAP, it certainly is multi-dimensional. There's the instructional component, there's the component of social-emotional development with students, there's the component of after-school enrichment activities. We wouldn't expect that every school is always going to be at the same place, but we would expect that schools would be moving towards full implementation of that program, using the tools that we're creating to help guide them, make continuous improvement. So that's the approach that we've taken. We're also doing some monitoring visits with schools to help them kind of think about how to use that tool. But again, we have AAP services, levels 1 through 4, in 160 schools, right? And a couple of staff members in the AAP office, they would not be able to individually monitor and evaluate program implementation specifically on their own. There has to be some shared effort with the school administration, with the faculty in the school, and with the division, I think, for us to be able to have a balance to get this right that's manageable and reasonable for people. So that's the general approach we're taking right now.
And to that point, I think, moving down the road, and certainly as we look to the strategic plan and our priorities, and we've talked about the OEs and kind of a step back process at some point down the road, a step back to say, okay, are we measuring the things that are most important to this board? I think that also goes to program evaluation because as Dr. Presidio just mentioned, you can't comprehensively evaluate everything.
Right.
So it might be beneficial at some point down the road to, on an annual basis, identify those programs that the board really wants a comprehensive program evaluation, and identify those on an annual basis and create a cycle of those so that you do get a meaningful, you know, deep dive analysis of, you know, a number of programs on an annual basis. You know, I think on ad hoc basis, we could add a few here or there as things come up, but it can't be all of it on an ad hoc basis. So I think that is something maybe to talk about down the road.
Dr. Presidio, just clarification on the tool that's developed, that's being developed. It is out there in all the schools now, and this is their first-year cycle that they're going through? Are they just starting it this, yeah, where are we, that date?
Yeah. The process was for schools to use the tool this year. And again, schools, as they're crafting their school improvement plans, may find that there's something related to that implementation of the AAP program that they might choose to put into their school improvement plan. They're not required to do so, but that was the goal, to have them have a tool that they could use to help them starting this year.
Okay. So what I guess I would ask then is, maybe for a next step, is if we could just have data on how many schools did use it and what their results are? I would appreciate that. And then-
Wait, we're going to always repeat next steps, okay? So this is to get information on the fidelity of implementation tool related to the AAP program? Do I have that worded correctly?
Yeah.
I think it's the number of schools that are currently using the program evaluation framework-
Correct.
-on a self-evaluation, right? As a self-evaluation right now?
How many are using it and what their results have been? Like, do they find that they're on target, or do they need improvement and where those areas of improvement are? You got that? And Ms. Quinn, I have one thing for you regarding the reduced lunch program. I understand that that is going up, that we're seeing more and more students who qualify for that. Could you explain to me, probably some board members know this, but I cannot recall, what's the criteria for proving eligibility for free and reduced lunch?
I don't have the specific information, but I believe it's 180 percent of the federal poverty level for free. It's 200 percent of the federal poverty level. So it's, it's not quite the federal poverty level that qualifies you for free and reduced. It's 200 percent, as Mr. Stork just mentioned. And then the reduce is a little bit higher than that. But the income levels are pretty low-
Okay.
-to qualify for free and reduced.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Patty, Sandy, then Megan.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I wanted to follow up just on a few things in particular and trying to keep it at a high level. Dr. Presidio, you mentioned pre-K and AAP centers as two issues that are, that should be at the forefront, I think. And I wonder, first of all, I acknowledge that Mr. Plattenberg isn't at the table, and that's actually something that I think is missing from our reports, and I'll want to discuss later. And that is, as we make decisions about pre-K, for example, and AAP centers, you acknowledge the fact that facilities play a large role in whether or not we have room, right? So I guess I'm wondering how we might go about, or do you incorporate the facilities component? You kind of alluded to it, so I wanted to see if you wanted to mention that a little bit more. Do you understand what I'm trying to get at?
I think so. I mean, first of all, we work with the Facilities Department to update our program projections every year. But the second piece is taking that information and doing some longer-term kind of planning and strategy with that information, which I don't think we've done as good of a job with as we need to have. So one of the things that we've done across our departments with Instructional Services and Facilities this year is to work together, kind of get a joint project team together to look very specifically at the number of AAP centers that are the most overcrowded and determine if there are any things that we can do from a facilities perspective or from a programmatic perspective to alleviate the overcrowding in those schools. Now, pre-K is just as important, right? But with both of those issues, I mean, the bottom line of what this comes down to is, and I mean, everybody I think would agree with this around the table, is that we just don't have adequate facility space in general. So if you look at our number of facilities and look at overcrowding, the schools that have AAP centers are not necessarily the most overcrowded campuses that we have in the division. So we're doing work to try to figure out how can we alleviate overcrowding in some of these schools, but at the same time, Jeff is doing other work in the CIP to think about how to alleviate overcrowding in other schools. So my general point just is, is that I think that we need to be thinking in a little bit of a longer-term strategy about how to get at some of these issues. Pre-K is the same thing. If we were to acquire more funding, federal funding, state funding, you know, county-based funding, one of our biggest challenges would be, can we find schools to actually open new classrooms in? So that's the point of our departments trying to work together a little bit more collaboratively and strategically.
And I think, in my view, on the AAP centers that is occurring, I mean, there have been plans, there have been some work done, in fact, individual meetings with some board members where we had some overcrowding. So that, I think, is in progress. I do think we're missing that in the area of pre-K because I think we all share that goal, but we really haven't detailed a plan for how do we get there? You know, how many slots are we short? Where would those need to be located? Do we have the capacity in those areas? And what, bottom line is the dollar amount that we need. So I do think that's very much needed in the area of pre-K, is a real comprehensive plan of what's needed to get there.
So Patty, I want to follow up with your comment because that is measure 2.6, and that was something, that was a new value that the board also added to this OE. So what I'm hearing you say is the answer to 2.6, hopefully, we'll have more specific information when the board gets it in the future rather than just being a narrative answer. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Right, yeah. And furthermore, just another point on the AAP center, since I'm the liaison to the APEC, and it'll be coming to us in June for the report, is the discussion once again about, do we need to be changing the programmatic? Yeah, the, how should I say? I mean, the number of kids who are qualified or, you know, all the issues associated with the number of kids who are qualifying for AAP centers. And so that's Pandora's box. But I guess my point is, I'm trying to show that there's a transportation component, there's clearly a facilities component, as more and more kids become eligible, and it's way higher, as we know, than the national average. To me, those are the kinds of complex but necessary policy discussions that we need to have, let alone the budget. So I guess I'm just wondering in the future, and maybe that's part of our next discussion, is how we go about kind of changing the way that we're reporting. So, you know, a couple of months from now, we get another piece of the puzzle, but to try to bring it all together in one place and really have the kind of discussion that I believe we need to have. Do you have any thoughts about that? Maybe you're doing that behind the scenes, but I know this board hasn't really had those kind of discussions.
We are doing some of that. I don't know it's necessarily behind the scenes, but I don't think we've had full opportunity to probably communicate with the board on it the way that we need to. We do track the historical eligibility information, and we- We do track the historical eligibility information, and we can provide that information to the board, if that's something that you would like to see. So that answers one of your questions. And then, you know, we've done a lot of work as next steps from, you know, our work sessions on AAP last year, to really think about a lot of these programmatic pieces. And one of the pieces that we wanted to share with the board, once we have a, you know, a more finished work product, is work around how we could address some overcrowding at some of the schools. So there are a number of things that I do think are in the works that we'll be able to provide more specific information on soon.
I think, again, back, the skip team has the three areas. That's the Successful Child and Youth Policy Team, and it has the three areas that the county also has, so preschool and school readiness, mental health, and disproportionality. So there has been some work done on the pre-K, but not as much as we need to. But it is a beginning discussion. And one of the things that I think is critical for us is not just to look at our Head Start waitlist, because Mara Burke discovered when you look at the state data, which we're required to report on, kids who've had no preschool experience, it's double the Head Start waitlist. So we're, we have to look at this in a bigger, in a dashboard way with the county as well.
Wow, okay. And I'll be quick, just on the rest of my points here. Thank you very much, that's very helpful. And I think that probably another discussion we need to have is how much time it takes you to prepare all this information, and then what is the subset that we really absolutely, you know, need to focus on? So that's just another point I wanted to make. I wanted to talk a little bit about the profiles. I know every year we kind of bring that up, Dr. Breeden, and I know you're working towards that, but I just wonder, as a group, whether we would want to consider having, you know, this trade-off between completing the profiles to the extent that you can, I understand your constraints, versus having a few of the full-blown. I mean, I feel that's probably a trade-off that you have to make, right? So I just wanted to acknowledge that, you know, I think it would be really great to have profiles of some, you know, I know you can't, but I wish that we could, because I feel that those are excellent ways to get a snapshot of what's happening, both from the programmatic and the budgetary perspective. So I'm hopeful that you all can continue to plug away at those. And last but not least, wanted to follow up on the FNS-related topics. And by the way, I have to acknowledge that there was a very nice article in the Washington Post today about Susan Quinn. And that is, when I'm kind of reading the tea leaves and looking at the data, I guess I'm wondering, you know, two things. How can we increase the paying customers for lunch? And that gets into, I'm sure, that some of the issues that Ms. Evans raised regarding, you know, the healthier servings, and are we still working on trying to decrease the traffic in the cafeterias? I know my kids, yeah, used to always say, I was in line the whole time, so I gave up. So to me, that's one thing. I'm wondering if we're addressing that and continuing to offer as many healthy options as we can, and I know Penny is here and could talk about that as well. And then, secondly, I wonder whether we might consider going back to charging for the reduced price meals, if only because you mentioned the depleting reserves, and that was a, you said it was a pilot. And I guess I wonder if anybody's thinking about that. I'm not making a value judgment on it, other than to say it might be something that we should look at as we try to increase the paying customers as well, but if we don't have the reserves that you feel we need, to me, that's a cause of great concern. So do you have any responses to that, Ms. Quinn?
I'll start with the last one first. You know, I think we started out this program during the downturn in the economy, and we wanted to ensure that students coming to school were fed at some point during the day. And I think it's a great program, and I think we do see participation in our free and reduced, but with everything we do, there is a cost associated with that, and I think you just have to be able to balance or prioritize, you know, do we want our students to have proper meals and make sure they're well-fed for the well-being of their health, to be able to be in the learning environment that, you know, with those healthy options, to how much it will cost to subsidize the program. So I do think it is a value statement that we are going to have to decide. Going back to some of the other options on how to increase participation, we have been trying to work with facilities each time we have a renovation, on a different model, the flow, because I think that is the key point. We can't move students fast enough through the lunch lines. So you do hear a lot of the students saying, "I'm just going to bring lunch from home, because I don't, I can't waste 15 minutes standing in line." So we do try to look for ways to move students through the line faster. We are also placing foods differently in our serving lines, so that they can't just grab and go. So in one of the items in our status report to the Prismatic Recommendations, you're going to note that we did expand the fresh fruit and vegetable bars, which we are now marketing it as fresh fruit and vegetable zones, okay? So there's going to be a lot of self-service type of items, but in order to move the students through the line, we're also going to have self-portioned items, so students can't just grab and go, rather than doing the self-serve. And we're also in the process of hiring a communications marketing person to see if we can promote the program a little bit more throughout all of our levels, but we're especially doing some activities in our elementary schools. So with the new Bailey's Upper Elementary School, we are going to try to get the teachers and the students involved, and have some type of contest on how to better promote some of the options that are offered through the lunch lines.
Very good, thank you.
Sandy, Megan, then Elizabeth.
Thank you. Thank you for this report. There's just so much here. I will stick to just a couple of areas, but I guess I feel we could talk all day on these important topics. I wanted to focus on the report on the reports, and particularly when you talk about the trends and issues. I guess I'd like a little bit more clarity. I'm sensing some frustration, perhaps, or maybe I'm reading between the lines about the type of reports that we have and whether we shouldn't be going in another direction. I'm looking, not there, but at the background material on issues and trends and FCPS technical reports, program evaluations, program profiles, which is...
Okay.
And I'm looking at page two, talking about how these reports give us a lot of information but don't draw as many conclusions about outcomes. Are you suggesting that we really need to change the focus of this? Is that what you're asking us to do?
I think one of the things is, as we look at the trends and issues, one thing, one of the reasons we even have that report is every time we did a comprehensive evaluation, this was probably like four or five years ago, we would find things that all of the evaluations pointed out. And let me try to be a little clear about what I mean. For example, sometimes the definition of a program, when we're so excited about getting it out there, we don't take time to really define it well.
Okay.
So since we were seeing that, this first OE about that was a way to say, what are you seeing overall from all the program evaluation? What is a weakness that all of our programs have? And that's how this report came about. I don't think that report has a tremendous amount of value anymore.
Okay.
So that's how that particular OE evolved. One of the things I'm thinking about as I'm listening to your comments and to what Dr. Garza said, is our process for choosing programs to evaluate, the board's role in that is just approving our plan. What I'm wondering, as I sit here, is maybe to look at how we choose programs and do a little bit more than just bringing you something and say, here's what we've come up with. Maybe there's a way that we can get more input. For example, what Ted just said about the monitoring of the change in the grading policy. I'm sitting here thinking, I'm not sure you want a monitoring, and I'm not sure it's quite a comprehensive evaluation, but basically you have some questions that you would like us to answer. So I'm thinking we probably need to probe a little bit deeper and see exactly what that is that you want. I don't think we're meeting your needs as best we can with our present practice.
Okay. And I see the examples, two examples, were in the honors courses.
Right.
And in the changes of discipline.
Right.
And I think there would be a value for all of us to say, here's why we're doing this.
Right.
Here's, you know, what we hope to accomplish, and, you know, and have we accomplished it.
Right.
You know, with honors courses, we wanted students to have the maximum challenges that they could take and succeed, and also succeed. So how one would measure that, and maybe our monitoring only said, well, here's numbers, here's numbers of kids, and maybe it didn't really answer that question. So I would support being clearer about our goal and our mission, so we can truly assess how we did on that, as well as with discipline policy. If we're going to monitor that, if we're going to evaluate that, it would make sense for us to be clear, you know, what do we hope to accomplish with these changes?
Right.
So I, and I go down farther in here to, I guess I'm not completely clear on where it says trends and issues from the program evaluations. The most significant trend in school year 13, 14 was the division shift away from planned program evaluations that make judgments and provide recommendations about efficiency and effectiveness. I didn't realize that we were, that we had shifted away. Can you explain that a little bit better?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
When you use the word monitoring, what you're asking us to do is to look at the present state. Let's take honors. How many students were enrolled in honors classes, AP courses, and general courses? Monitoring just says, we counted them, this is how many were in it.
Okay.
This is how many moved. And I don't think sometimes that's what you want. You want to know why, where, how come, more than that.
Is this working, and is it working well?
Right. So it's, I think that's what the shift is. Sometimes I think it's just in the term monitoring versus evaluation.
Okay. Because I, you know, have we really moved away from recommendations about efficiency and effectiveness, though? That's kind of surprising.
Um...
That's all right, if you want to think about that a little bit more.
Yeah, I don't know. It depends on which one we're monitoring or evaluating, I think, would be my answer.
All right. Because I think we do, you know, we do care about efficiency and effectiveness, as well as outcomes.
Right.
So I guess I will support what Ms. Darnett-Kofak said. I'm glad we're going to get a follow-up on fidelity of implementation on AAP. That's an area of concern, so I'll be interested to see where that stands at particular schools. And lastly, I guess I would say, I would have expected to see blueprint for change in both this report and in the learning environment report. To my mind, that's fundamentally an instruction and learning environment issue. So, and I sure hope you all are involved in the conversations on that important change. So I guess I would ask that a next step be that, in the future, that that initiative be somewhere included in your report.
Yeah, and I think that that, this report is on the stuff that happened the last year.
Well, they're also talking, well, they're also talking about the future.
Well, but this, yeah. This report really is, should be based on the stuff we've done the past year. So I think that's an issue, whether you're talking about a program evaluation on that...
Oh, I'm not talking about program evaluation. I mean, the instructional services report and the learning environment report includes, you know, projections, you know, issues and trends. It includes, it doesn't include just a retrospective, you know, we have, we have...
To that, to that point, excuse me, that's why I was running late this morning, because I am actively involved on that committee, and we had a meeting this morning. Craig Herring in ISD sits on that committee as well.
Excellent.
So we are actively participating, and we can include it in issues and trends with no problem.
That would be great. I would appreciate that. But you said that is going to, in fact, affect our academics, it's going to affect, hopefully, our graduation rates, all of that sort of thing. And I will say, I find today a little bit frustrating, and when I was going over all the, all the reports, there's just so much today. You know, I, there's just so much today. That's all I'll say.
Megan, then Elizabeth, then Dan.
Can I defer and go after Elizabeth and Dan, because I'm just working on another question?
Yep, Elizabeth.
I'd like to, if possible, let's go back a little bit to, I'd like to build a little bit, I think, on some of Ms. Darnett-Kofak's and Ms. Evans's questions. So, Dr. Presidio, with the, with the school evaluation model that you were talking about on the self-evaluation, the concern that I have, and the way that it's described, because I think you said 140 schools, and some of the objectives of the Portrait of a Graduate, which is to overcome the concept of pockets of excellence, is if the model for program fidelity review is a self-evaluation model, I'm not exactly sure what that tool is. And how do you, how does the system avoid those ongoing pockets of excellence under a self-evaluation model, when each individual school is effectively grading itself? I'm not sure I understand how, how we weave together, because that's our current problem. And I don't see how this helps us get over the hurdle of the current problem of level four at one school is not level four at another school. So can, I have other questions, but can you just, I don't want to make the question too broad.
I'm also going to interrupt a little bit, because one of the things that we were concerned in, and I, you know, I share board members' frustration, because there's so much here. Some of the individual topics like AAP, if there's a lot of questions about that, one of the things we talked about is either getting those answers through a report or another work session. So we'll have some brief answers here, but there's so many topics in here, we don't have enough time to delve deeply into all of them. So we're going to do some surface answering, and if we have to have more follow-up, we will.
Okay. So I, hold on, I just have a question for the meeting manager then. What is the opportunity, given the breadth of topics that we have here? If we can't delve deeply into it now, when do we?
And that's something that we talked about with the superintendent. We would plan that time.
Okay.
Because today is the overall, the report, and when you have, I don't even know how many issues and trends and topics are, we can't delve into all of them. But we want to make sure board members' questions are answered.
Well, and then I...
And it's just planning that.
Then I would posit that this, this could be, in retrospect, this could be one of those sessions that maybe we use our alternate and additional sessions, because there's too much information here that I think we do need to, I mean, if we don't delve deeply on this, then what are we doing? So not that that's up for debate, I'm just offering, as an observation, that this is one of the opportunities that we need as an additional work session to go more deeply into the work that the board is charged to do. So please, Dr. Presidio.
Yeah, if I might respond to that, because I think it's a very important question. If we want programs to be consistently of high quality, we have to be very explicit about what the standards are. So what does, what does ideal look like? And so I think, from what I've gathered in following the work that's been done around AAP, that started from the program evaluation done by George Mason almost a year ago, right, was we did not have explicit standards around what program quality looked like. And so those, that was what was developed, and so yes, it might be self-evaluation right now, just to get, promote awareness, but I think very definitely would fold into much more prescriptive response that comes, becomes more formalized in an evaluation. But I think, at least in my estimation, you first had to create understanding around what the expectations are, and that's the starting point only.
And if I could add just a couple things to that real briefly, because I, again, this is a complex topic, and I probably didn't address it sufficiently. A couple other things about the Fidelity of Implementation Self-Evaluation Tool is, we hope that we would be able to collect those and give schools feedback on their own evaluation, right? That's one of the things that we do in IB program evaluations. The school does a self-evaluation, and they get external feedback on the work that they've done, along with recommendations for improvement. But again, we're just initiating this process and trying to develop the capacity to do that. Another thing in relationship to equity of services, as you know, not all schools are staffed the same with regard to AAP services. So some schools have full-time, advanced academic resource teachers. Other schools have half-time, advanced academic resource teachers, and then trade for funds to have a full-time teacher. So there's some discrepancy about the amount of resources that schools have as well. Last year, the board helped quite a bit to start to level that playing field by adding some additional positions in. But the complexity around this, there are a number of levels that we need to work from. And as Dr. to work from. And as Dr. Garza said, the first part that we're trying to get really clear on is, what are the program standards that we need every school to adhere to? How do we help schools evaluate and monitor their ability to implement the program as designed? And how do we target supports to schools in areas of need? But it's a pretty big, you know, it's a pretty big program in the division, and that's a lot to get your arms around in a short period of time. So I'm happy to talk more about it. I'm also happy to provide a written update of the work that's happening. I mean, whatever would please the board to get you the information, I'm happy to do.
Okay, thank you. I have a little bit more of a follow-up question to what you said, Dr. Garza, about, the hope is that it becomes more prescriptive in nature. Could you, could you give me an insight as to, or give us an insight as to what that looks like? Because, I mean, this is one of our crucial, you know, service areas. And, and the concept that the fidelity of implementation is left to a self-evaluation model, even, even like a review at some point, I mean, and I'm not going to say that any principals or any schools, you know, are, you know, would intentionally upgrade themselves, but, you know, they're going to be incentivized to say, yeah, we're doing a good job. And so I'm, I'm just, this is, this is an area where I see, in terms of a role for a independent auditor function for the school board, having program evaluation audit, that that's, that's where you get the arms length. And you need to be in an area that you don't have organizational conflict of interest. And to say that, that those who are doing, and this would apply to AAP or any other model, that a core function of what we do is left to, you know, kind of at an enterprise-wide level, that the main target for evaluation is a model based on a self-evaluation tool, I think, you know, leaves the fidelity of the board's work, you know, in question in terms of what we're providing, because the only way we have to gauge is the various schools that are providing the service telling us how they're doing their job.
As it relates to the independent nature of evaluation, I think that's what goes to this, you all, because you couldn't, from a program evaluation standpoint, like an audit function, what you just described, you couldn't do every program every year, right? So you would, as a board, identify those that you think are mission-critical and put those on a cycle. With that said, I still think there's a place for, once we've established what the standards are around program evaluation or program quality around AAP, for an example, then the program department could take on themselves quite a number of schools every year and go in and do an informal review and give the schools feedback. So to me, they're not exclusive with each other.
I agree with you completely, that this is a component, but right now, it's, it's basically the main, the main method of evaluation. So, all right, I do think this requires a much greater depth. If we could, I also have a question with regard to, I feel like I'm going to ask this question at every work session until I get the answer that I want. The SAC classroom MOU and the pre-K waiting list and the question of the space, especially since we're getting ready to consider budget amendments. I'm wondering where we are on that, and, you know, being able to absorb, is it one classroom, two classrooms, five classrooms of kids? I don't know. And it's very difficult, knowing that we haven't solved the one problem, which is a domino to the other. And, you know, this sort of goes to how we're monitoring our own conduct of, how do, how do you whittle down a pre-K list when you have seats that are withheld during the academic school day? So can, do, is there any feedback on that, Ms. Quinn? That's a hot potato. Somebody...
Well, I get it, I get it. I'll take it. Again, pre-K, and I think you hit on maybe a potential piece of a solution. I think there's some other solutions, you know, putting qualified teachers into daycare centers. I mean, I think there's a lot of different solutions, but in my estimation, I've not seen, and I think we need to do this, a comprehensive analysis of where do we have gaps in our service to kids? Where is it in the area all throughout our division? Where do we have, you know, where are we short classroom space? And I think a piece of that could be SAC. But I think we need to spend probably a good six months studying this issue and have a detailed, comprehensive strategy. I've not seen that anywhere. I don't think the county has it either.
Does this need to be captured in this OE, though? How we, I mean...
Okay, so I'm gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna try to use a few less words to get us there. I think that was the feedback. I think it, was it item 2.6? Was that the one that was looking at the efficiency of use of space, that the board wanted more specific information about that? So I think that is where that comes in. And I think, did we have that as a follow-up?
Next step.
As a next step, I'm sorry. With item...
All right, if we have that as a next step.
Okay.
Okay.
With item, let me make sure Pam gets this. With item 2.0, measure 2.6, that the, the response would have more specific information about program use and capacity in schools. Is that a good way to put it? You know? And I think that, that covers that. Okay, Elizabeth?
And then the last, well, I have more, but I'll, I'll make this my last right now. Back to Ms. Quinn, the, the marketing person for FNS. I have to tell you, with a budget as tight as we have and a $17 million gap, this one gives me enormous heartburn that we need a communications model that requires another overhead individual at Gatehouse in order to do this. And how that fits into, you know, monitoring, you know, the effectiveness, I'm not exactly sure what the idea is behind the goal of a number of lunches sold. I mean, I'm assuming that it rolls into the overall efficacy of the budget of, you know, the more people who buy lunch, the more money we have, and the more self-propelling the FNS system is. But the role of a marketing person, when we have an entire DCCO and an entire FNS, I don't understand how that goes into goal-setting for sales within and monitoring us achieving a certain number of sales of lunches.
I think there's some misinformation out in the community about the food services program. And this position would reside in with Food and Nutrition Services, and it's going to do, their main role will be communications and marketing. But if you recall in the Prismatic recommendations, they actually recommended five additional positions to be able to monitor all the programs within the food program, because the scope, the span of scope for those supervisors. So what we recommended in the action plan is really just two positions out of the five. And what this one individual would do is, most of the time, would be spent on communications and marketing materials. So some of the schools need support in putting out parent newsletters. And one of the things that I did mention, it was part of the Golden Wellness Program, that also talks about schools being able to communicate information on wellness and health activities, so this person would support the schools.
I, I understand that. But, Dr. Garza, if you, if you would, again, we don't listen to any of these monitoring reports and the operations in a stovepipe mentality. This is, you know, it's the, the thread of the fabric is to our budget discussion and the overall structure of the school division. And knowing what we know, knowing where our holes are, you know, I'd, I'd ask that maybe Finance and Food and Nutrition Services and you look at the monitoring that's required. It's nice that Prismatic, you know, said, oh, hey, add five people, but that's not the, that's not our reality. Our reality is a $17 million hole, and, and where our priorities are. And are our priorities on marketing and monitoring Food and Nutrition Services, or getting the money into, you know, when you hear we're going down to a one-month reserve, I mean, I saw Ms. Smith's face, and, you know, I can see that she's, you know, she, as the rest of us, are concerned. And so it's a question of where we spend our money, and it's, it's the...
Okay, so I'm gonna move us along.
So, I know you want to move us along, but these are, these are heady subjects, and they require our thought, especially since we're going into budget amendments. And hear me when I'm saying this, I'm laying the groundwork for some of my colleagues, that, you know what? We have, we have to be wise of where we're monitoring and evaluating, and how we can do that effectively, maybe across, more tightly across our, our Gatehouse divisions.
Ms. Smith, I'm sorry, I'm very sensitive, fact you're trying, we're very tight on time. But I don't want the public to be misled on this issue, so I want to be very clear. When we talk about a marketing, marketing specialist in our Food and Nutrition Program, as was pointed out earlier, that's a self-sustaining program. So that's funded through the Food and Nutrition monies. If, in fact, it doesn't produce results, then we can next year say we're not going to do that. But we're talking about something that, if we don't, we've got to increase our participation. And some of it is the way in which we market it to our students. The materials in our schools, the signage, the way we talk about the different components that they can select from, you know, and I think our team has done a great job on that, but can we look at that differently? Because we do have to look at it from a different perspective if we intend to increase our participation. And ultimately, we'll measure that, and if it doesn't pay off, we won't be in a position to continue to fund it. But just to be clear, that position's not taking money away from schools or the general operating funds. All of it we have to be careful with, granted. I'm concerned about the fund balance in our Food and Nutrition Program, too. But we've got to do some things differently in order to increase participation, and we'll continue to measure that.
Okay, Elizabeth. All right, I have Dan and then Megan.
Thank you. I'm just going to tag on that quickly. I can't remember if the Prismatic study went into the sources of the decline, and I'm going to go back and take a look at that. And the communications person, I could see the value of that, maybe add to it. But if the wait times are really the core issue, then that's really something we have to also address as we, we, not good enough? Okay, thanks. The wait times, the two issues, the communications person, okay, I see, if it doesn't pay off from a business perspective, we do it, we try it, if not, they don't get a return on it. And there are obviously a business model there would tell you, you need to increase X amount of dollars in order to be able to fund this position. But the, the wait times, if that's a core issue, then, then it doesn't really matter. I mean, that maybe it's only a piece of it. I don't need an answer, but I, that is, I'm going to go back and look at the study to see if there's specific enough information there. And, which was, gets to the question I was going to ask, which is variance by school. Clearly, that's, that may be the biggest challenge we have, is some schools have far higher participation than others, and what's driving that differential? And, again, that's, so I just wanted to put that on the list, and I want to do a next step to see kind of where that is.
Okay.
The other point...
Let's just make sure we get that clear. So it's variance by school of participation of breakfast and lunch?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think it's understood.
I think it's, I thought, I think I sort of recall that, too, but I'll pull it up while we're talking, and before we get to the next steps, I'll, I'll look at that. I didn't have a chance to do that as I was thinking about it here. The other points I want to make is, the Fidelity of Implementation, I share that concern, it's a deep issue. For me, one that's been ongoing, one that's presumably problematic, particularly when I've worked with, I know a couple of schools, and from my perspective, they still are not implementing some of our commitments with respect to ensuring that elementary schools offer the rigor and the richness of math programs, or advanced math programs that we've committed to. And that ties directly into the TJ issue and minority, minority involvement in TJ. I think those, those two go hand in hand, and I'm convinced that we're not doing that. I know we're not doing that, at least a couple of schools I'm aware of. Then the achievement gap plan revisions, I just, I wasn't, I know that's also listed in here as a follow-up, I mean, a initiative, but the, you'd mentioned that those are getting, those are being revised. Is there a plan to report those out to the board, and when so, and how so? And just, if you can either advise us now, or just send us an email, tells us what that is, that'd be great, if you don't want...
Just, just real briefly, we're in the process of developing the performance targets, which we're not. We did not have any performance targets in our previous plan. So we have that pretty close. We're going to be sharing it with LT at the end of this month, and then kind of following the superintendent's feedback in terms of what revisions we might need to make. I think that's something that we can share with the board pretty soon.
Okay, so no later than July, we would see something?
Yes, and I believe the major components of the plan were presented to the board. I can't remember what month. Do you remember that, Dr. Presidio?
That was, I believe, back in the fall. It's been quite a while ago, so I don't think people would remember. Yeah.
And have those, will those be shared with MSAOC?
Yeah, MSAOC was very helpful in terms of helping set the performance targets, in terms of the methodology of the performance targets, not to go too far on a bird walk here. But we're going to be looking at measuring absolute performance more than we're going to be measuring the gap. That was one of the things that MSAOC felt was, was important, was to set a high expectation for every individual student despite race or class.
Yeah, I know it's been a discussion in the committee many times. And last item is, I want to kind of refer to governance as the program profiles. I, I think, in some ways, you can't evaluate a program until you've defined what it is. So, you know, getting into Fidelity of Implementation, I mean, I realize it doesn't probably affect the core things we're talking about here, but, but I think we need both. But there is a hierarchy of sorts for which ones program profiles really matter quickly versus longer term. And then some of them are, the degree of information that maybe need, is needed is less than others. And so I don't know if governance needs to be involved with helping to, at least to define this, or if that's more of a superintendent issue. But I'd like to at least see, there's some kind of tiering of that program, program profile information so that we, the stuff that's most essential is done, and then we can go down the list from that. So, no initial comment, I just was going to put that as a governance item to talk about, and when we get to that. That's it for me.
Thank you, Dan. Megan?
I guess I'll begin by saying that I really appreciate the work everybody's put into this, and I have no doubt that it's just one more thing on your plates, that you put in a lot of long, hard hours on and try and draw a lot of information. I also know from listening to my colleagues that we could probably spend a week alone, truly, doing a monitoring report on instructional programs. And, and that would probably still not be enough. I think I heard you say, Dr. Sloan, 70 programs. That said, my colleagues have heard me say before, I strongly dislike these monitoring reports. I don't find them...
Okay, so we, we're watching time. I want you to talk about that when we get to the governance work session.
Okay.
If you could just focus right now on questions, specifically in areas one, two, or three. I know people kind of bled off into other stuff, but let's keep it on this report. And I agree with you, Megan, we need to make changes for the future, but let's not do that now, okay?
Okay. I guess what, I, I won't have any specific questions, other than to support all that I've heard my colleagues ask, because that's just scraping the surface. I will say that there are parts in the report that, you know, we get information like instruments that we distribute to students. Thought that was very meaningful, very helpful gauge, and it felt like there's something we're monitoring. But overall, in, in terms of some of these, I guess I'm just really struggling, because it felt as if I was getting a descriptor, but in, in the outcome, but not findings. And so, when Ms. Smith was saying, do you have any specific questions, it's just very global for me with the entire report. And I just, I, I, in trying to be transparent, I, I can't vote yes for the report today, because when I look at the individual measures, even on some of the ones that we asked for, 3.5 on annually update curriculum to promote healthy choices and wellness for students through the instructional program, I just felt that the response in terms of student wellness was so narrow, I wouldn't be doing my job to just say, yep, they're doing that. I have no idea. I think there's two sentences that said, you know, this is kind of what we're trying to do, but there's, there's no verification here that I can even speak to. You know, this is what we're doing as a system to, to actually measure and do well. And that's what I think I found so unusual about this report. There's some great charts in here, and there's some measures that are incredibly specific, and then others are so broad, it's almost no information. So, since we're short on time, you know, I really won't go into the greater detail, maybe when we talk about what to do about these reports, but... maybe when we talk about what to do about these reports, but I think I wanted to just make sure staff knew. I do appreciate the hard work, and maybe it comes at the board level, and with Dr. Garza, and as she said, our strategic plan, but I feel like this is a lot of work on your part, and it didn't, in the end, produce information that makes me feel more comfortable as a board member. And so I'll just leave with this, and I know Ms. Smith said we'll talk about it on a broader level, but, you know, the Latin word, "monit", is to be warned. And that's where the word "monitor" comes from. To observe and check progress or quality. A systematic review. And unfortunately, I just don't think that's what we got here. It's not staff's fault. I just think, wow, it just was in a nutshell for me, one of those things where I walked away thinking, "Oh, I'll leave on a positive note." I think that the sections, are we going to the next sections with the 6.0 and the... Yeah. That was extremely meaningful to me.
So, I have two points I want to make. One is, and a couple of other board members said this, with the Measure 1.4, fully developed program profiles, I do think we have an issue there. We're not able to increase it enough, and I do think there has to be an analysis of what's reasonable with the program profiles, how do we do it, the expectations of how they're developed. So I do think that needs to be a next step moving forward, because there's a reason you can't get more people to do it. And so is the process not right? Is the expectation not right? So I would think that would have to be, rather than to the governance committee, Dan, I think that has to be an analysis from staff, the cost-benefit analysis of how we do it and how we're going to use it. So, not to governance, that really has to be something from staff to do that. The other issue, I am going to agree with Megan over the report, it is very narrative. And that's interesting information, and I think you feel this frustration when I talk to you, too, Sloan. We need to get to the point where we are seeing data in a different way in this, and I think that's why we need to change the measures and some of the values.
So if you would just allow one brief point of indulgence, I do agree with that. It's very difficult for us to measure the value statements as currently constructed. We have done some work in instructional services, to talk about the value of operational expectations needs to be to instructional services, as well as to the board and the broader community. So we have created some suggested revisions based on, you know, program quality indicators through other associations, looking at organizational performance, and I'd be happy to discuss those with the board at any time. So I think we can improve these.
So, we still have one more to get through, and we should be done right now. What I would like to do is to see the next steps. We got through the main part of this discussion. I know that the board had a couple of areas, like the AAP, Dan asked for follow-up about the achievement gap issue, that we'll have some follow-up on those issues. If there are other areas in the report where board members wanted to follow-up, I don't really want to take time to take all of them now, but I'm wondering if the best way to do that would be to email the superintendent. But Megan, what were you going to say?
Well, just, one of the measures referenced our English as second language, or English learners. I mean, there's, it really just kind of, it was a descriptive. It said, "This is what we're doing." But there wasn't anything that actually says, "How are they doing? How quickly are we moving through? Have we seen improvement over the year prior in terms of their success in the program and coming in and leaving, you know, depending on their level?"
So some of that, and I think that's one of the distinctions that's hard sometimes for the board, that specific student achievement level usually falls in the SAG reports, the Student Achievement Goal reports, whereas the Learning Environment OE is really more about the staff work to change the curriculum and do that piece.
That's fine, but then they could also say, "What have we been learning about best practices in terms of moving our students?"
Yeah. I think there's definitely a recognition that we need to tighten this up and do that, and we'll address it a little bit more in the governance work session. Okay, so if we could see the next steps and then call for the vote on this report, and then, you know, Dan and I are in a situation where we don't want to get too far behind today, but I'm wondering if we can, the other report doesn't have as many, it's not as long, so I'm hoping that we can at least get through the presentation, hopefully get through enough board questions. If we can't, then we'll need to see if we need to do some rescheduling, but I would at least like to get through the presentation and do that. Do we have next steppies, or not really?
They're working on that.
Okay, they're working on that. Technology? No? You could email it to everybody. Can you just, what if you just read them? Are there... Hmm? It takes a villain. So, let's go through them. Provide a report about grading scale policy changes and the resulting effect on college I don't think that that's really the next step. Right, I don't think that that's truly the next step. What Ted asked for is if we were doing a report about that, but I come back to what Terry said about, it really needs a bigger discussion about where do you want to go? So I don't think, I don't think we're at the point of providing a report.
Mr. Velkoff? Mr. Velkoff, could I suggest that to be brought to the forum discussion? I think that may require some discussion by the board members, and also from a staff's perspective, as to the magnitude of the time commitment.
The only piece that I think could be provided, the next step, is to find out, had the board asked for any kind of report? I think there needs to be some research. Was there anything that had been put out there about that?
Maybe we could share with you what we think we did, and then you could see, is that sufficient? And it may be something you add to the multi-year plan.
So is that okay with people, that they will... Yes. Well, I don't think that needs to be a next step, he'll just do that. Yeah, yeah, and he might decide based on getting this information, okay? So the next one about fidelity of implementation, we were fine on that.
Actually, I also think we should be saying which schools are doing it. Yeah, not just the number.
You mean number and name?
I'd like to know which ones are doing it.
Okay. Okay, so the next one, provide specific information on, about Measure 2.6. I would think that isn't to be redone for this report. I think as we move forward into the next report, we're going to want a more specific answer, rather than going back in time, because I think what I heard Sloan say, this is a process that they're trying to get better about. So are we okay if, that we add for the future report there? Sandy?
I'm sorry.
2.6 was the one that talks about accessibility to programs across the system, so it's really that tie-in between facilities, where we put programs, where there's the space for programs.
We do intend to provide the board with information on the work on the AAP center overcrowding, and as Dr. Garza said, we've had discussions with individual board members, but we intend to provide something more comprehensive to the entire body, so that's one thing we will do.
And I think, to me, as a board member, it goes beyond that. It goes to where we put special programs for special services and the whole overall picture of things. So they're kind of two things, but are we okay with saying for future reports that the response will be more specific? Okay, provide variance by school, the student participation rate for both breakfast and lunch, and that might be an answer that's already out there that can be provided.
It's imprismatic, just reference that it's imprismatic, and we can look at it. I just, I didn't look at that before I...
Okay, so we don't need to provide that...
Just let us know if it's, well, if it's already in there, I didn't...
Oh, Dan's saying, "Staff, we'll see if it's already imprismatic." Just reference...
Just reference it, if you would, please.
Just reference the information.
I just...
And it's not provided?
Yes, if not, if it's not there, then provide it, okay? And then, additional information about how program profiles are developed, the degree... I don't know that we need information about how they're developed, but I think what we're really looking for is to staff to look at the whole process over program profiles and see what needs to be changed about it. That's the core of that. Because you don't, I mean, it's the same thing, gathering data that's not necessarily useful, and where is the staff time, and how can we do that? So I think staff has to have a review of the program profile process.
Think about all the other stuff?
Yeah, because that stuff they'll know. We just want...
Analyzing.
And that could lead you to the fact that you do them differently.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, I don't think it's provide additional information about the program profiles. It's review the program profile.
Well, and if you, and if we should be at a hundred percent.
Right, see, that's the thing, maybe we shouldn't be at a hundred percent, and it should be a different process, something done differently.
Is that okay?
I would like there to be a piece and there a consideration of, they should maybe be changed. Yes.
Yes, yep.
I don't know if this belongs here or in our discussion of measures, but progress in project-based learning, and particularly STEM to STEAM, because this is central support.
If we can keep that for the future, that will be in the next reporting.
That's fine, thanks.
So I think that's better there. Sandy?
And I'd also ask that Blueprint for Change be in one of the initiatives in process.
Initiatives in process, or issues and trends? Initiatives in process?
Well, either or both, wherever they think it's appropriate. To include Blueprint for Change.
Okay. Next year. What's the best way to, where would you put that?
Sometimes you put them in both.
That's fine.
Because sometimes they're the initiative, sometimes they're a budget. So I think it should...
It'll be somewhere, you know, wherever you think is most appropriate.
That's a good way, but include Blueprint for Change in the, in next year's report.
Can I put it right here?
No, I think it should be a separate bullet. Okay, are we ready to rock and roll? Okay, so the motion on the floor is, "I move to accept the Instructional Program Operational Expectations Monitoring Report." All those in favor of the motion? Velkoff, Darrenet Kofax, Evans, Moon, Reed, Strauss, McElveen, Stork, Smith, I got that all right. All those opposed? McLaughlin? All those abstaining? Schultz, the motion passes. Thank you. Okay, so are we okay, you don't need to change anything, can we just roll into the next one? Okay, we're going to roll into Learning Environment.
And just the, kind of the ground rules for this, we, what we're looking at trying to do is, we need to be done by 1:30, people want to eat. We realize it's not going to be, and we have a governance session before the next, the governance piece will just mostly identify what else we need to do in the future. We truly only have about a half hour for this discussion. Staff can give the report in about 15 minutes. I think if we could do a lightning round, if you will, at least identify key things that people want to make sure get addressed, and then I think we're going to need, at least at that point in time, we can assess whether or not we need to do a further work session. I imagine we are going to want to, and we could tie that into some additional instructional services discussions, that I know part of what people are interested in doing today, so, but we'd have to then, if we identify that those are things we want to do, then we would implore our chairman to make, find a way to make that happen. So, "I move to accept the Learning Environment slash Treatment of Students Operational Expectations Monitoring Report." Is there a second? Sandy, Ms. Evans seconded it, so now we will move on to the discussion, and I turn it over to Dr. Dockery.
Thank you. I did ask Dr. Presidio to stay here, because we do have some issues and concerns in the areas of counseling, which is in his department, and psychologists later on related to 504, so he's going to be here with me. I'm going to help you with the time management by just pointing out some of the critical areas. Some things have not changed, if you look at 1.1, because this is now given biannually, and so we don't have new data this year for the collective efficacy, but we will in fall of 2014. New 1.2 is the percent of teachers rated highly effective, effective, and this is new this time, because it's the first year that we've had the teacher evaluation data, and that rubric is in the narrative. And so this is the first year that we've had that baseline data, where looking at highly effective or effective, the baseline data is at 97%. And the numbers broken out between highly effective, effective, needs improvement or ineffective, are in the narrative, if you want those broken out. The percent of FCPS employees, active network users trained, has remained the same at 100%. 1.4 brings about the same conversation that you've had around self-evaluation. We have developed the PBA rubric that's used within the school plan. And I think as Dr. Presidio was talking about earlier, when the data comes in on that, because in March, we collect the self-assessments around PBA, we do look at individual school ratings, and we look where their areas are higher or low, and that's where we offer support to the schools. We do know that we continue to use a coaching cadre as well for PBA, so that we bring the coaches together regularly, so that we do have some fidelity of implementation back across the district, and that did show a 3% gain. Under restorative justice, are the next, oh, sorry, the percent of SRNR training is at 100%. We track that through my PLT. In restorative justice, we have two different items. The first is the number of schools trained at levels two and three, and Mrs. Smith did help me get these numbers straightened out, thanks to her, because we started with five schools trained in 1213, and this year, we are now at 34 schools. Levels two or three is a deeper level, where the school staff themselves are able to conduct more, more difficult cases with mentoring and coaching from our central office staff. However, at the Level 1, 93% have all done Level 1, and the one case is still being scheduled because of a change in administration. So we are going to be able to report 100% of the schools at Level 1 by the end of this summer. In terms of discipline infractions, this has decreased by 39% since '09. 1.9, looking at the nutrition logs and fitness plans, this is something that we are reporting based on the Carol P. White Grant. And we went to this because some of the items in the youth survey were yet less helpful, but I may be bringing something back in addition to this, because we're not sure that the logs and the nutrition, we do know they're going to continue to keep that data, but we're evaluating with Liz Payne the usefulness of that data. So that's just one that we're keeping our eye on. We finally, thanks to Ms. Evans and Ms. Smith, got the sleep item right, because the youth survey does ask for the number of hours on a school night, and it does ask that. And when I was trying to figure out, why did we get that so messed up? It's because Donna Lantini does a great job of monitoring this, and I said, "Donna, when was your brain surgery last year?" She said it was May 30th, and that's where this item, we changed it when she was out. And so I'm like, "Don't ever have brain surgery again," because that's where we dropped that item. But we did get it corrected, and we do collect the data in that way. So you will see that it's a watch item, because grade eight at 57.5% is slightly up, but 10 and 12 are slightly down. And I did want to give you, I pulled the national averages there, and we are higher at grade eight than the national average, and lower at 10 and 12 than the national averages, just by a small percentage, but those are trends that we are higher at eight and lower at 10 and 12. And this is a place where we have been very active in the Blueprint for Change. I've attended all of the meetings, and will be attending the community meetings, and we can reflect that in our issues and trends in the future, so I'm happy to do that. For 1.11, we have this reported in two ways. This is the ratio of counselors, psychologists, and social workers. And in the first, I find us not meeting because we have a number that means we're not as effective because the ratios are very high. But if you look at efficiency, that's good because we're very efficient with the number of folks that we have. And this is going to be an issue and trend that's, that I'll get to in just a minute, that's very impactful for both Dr. Presidio and my department moving forward. Because of changes in 504 laws and the federal requirement that we change our form. So I'll speak to that in just a minute. In terms of parent engagement, we continue to increase in that area. The special education survey was given last year. It's projected to be given again this fall. But given resources, it's one that's really on the list of not looking at if we have enough resources to do that again, but I will be looking at that. And then the last one is, are some new items related to working environment. And we use data from both the youth survey and the working condition survey. And so the youth survey items were around, I feel safe at my school, my teachers praise me when I have done well in school. And there are a lot of chances for students to talk one-on-one. The interesting thing about this data is the center one, my teachers praise me well. The only time you'll see that difference is every other year because you're not testing, asking the question the same kids. It's not given on the next year. So I'll be looking at that next year because then the same students will be answering the survey again. And then under the working condition survey, we're looking at learning environment, the faculty work in a school environment that is safe. Students are caring toward one another and the atmosphere of the school climate makes students feel safe. And those have held fairly stable with slight percent increases in, in percentage of percentages over, in the last year from 13 to 14. In terms of important initiatives to be aware of, the first one is really in the area of section 504 qualifications. There were nationwide audits from the federal government around the implementation of 504. They made recommendations that form be changed as well as adding that parents can request evaluations through the 504 process. We've never had that before, and that is a, a big workload difference for evaluating for 504s. From 2001 to 2014, we increased in the number of 504s by about 200%. And we will continue to increase with the number of 504s in a similar or greater amount now that we know that evaluations can happen through that process. So it is a change that was not anticipated, but we will be putting that in the fiscal forecast. Because counselors manage this in the schools as well as their psychologists do the testing. We don't think there'll be a full battery of testing such as occurs with IDA qualification. But we do think there is going to be an increased request for testing with the 504 process. So management of that, the increased numbers and true ability to implement that is going to be a very challenging issue coming forward. The good news on that is we're adding, you know, how we have GET IEP in our IEP system for all teachers to be able to access. We're adding 504s to that system, so GET 504 will be available. So that more teachers are aware and able to implement accommodations. That's been an issue for us as well. We also have an OCR case where we're looking at where do we fall down, what are our common places where implementation of 504s need to be addressed in our system? And GET 504 is part of that. I think the other issue that is, I think it's a, a good issue is we've had a lot more interest in the Gallup survey. We will be giving that again in the fall for 10-year period. It is free. And we have had a lot more requests from schools looking at that information. And as we develop that and see what those numbers look like, I can bring that back to you later. So I think that is learning environment. And I know that there were a couple of questions around psychologists and counselors, and I wanted to make sure that I represented that. And then the other one was in terms of sleep, what are we doing for that? And I think including issues and trends within the blueprint, and the Blueprint for Change would be helpful there. Less than 15.
Thank you, Dr. Dockery. That, that, that was definitely a speed read. I would just ask everybody if you could just pick one item and make it brief. We'll go around the table. We'll give you multiple chances until we decide that we need to move on to the next topic. So Ms. Reed, I see your hand up. So if you want to get started.
Only one. Oh, boy. Well, I think I'm going to just follow up on the issue since I had communicated that in advance. Very concerned about the issue of psychologists, social workers, and counselors. And that was before you mentioned about the 504 changes. Because when I looked at those ratios, and some of us have met with some of the school psychologists and other staff. And also given the fact that we're more and more concerned about the mental health of our kids and the stress levels. Given that whole picture, I guess I want to understand how you think we can continue to operate, you know, and given the increased needs with the staff workload the way it is. I mean, shouldn't we be talking about ways to increase the staff or do business differently? I mean, what are your thoughts about that?
Well, I think it has to do with both of those. We are currently within DSS looking at other school districts because they deploy testing teams. Some school districts deploy testing teams so that it's not assigning a psychologist to a building. But certain psychologists go around and do the special ed testing. Other psychologists are there for student services. So I think we have to look at models as well as staffing in the future. And we've already started looking at that and looking at some of how our surrounding districts do that. Other districts also use contracted folks. And I think it's a combination of all of the above because I don't see resources pouring from the heavens as well. So I think we have to, to look at how we're doing business. And then again, in the fiscal forecast, there's no way to avoid that the 504 workload is going to be huge.
I, I think, Kim, your point's a good one. The standards are great to know what those are, but those are national associations that establish those standards. I do think it'd be important to look at, because I'm, I'm not familiar with a school system that actually meets the standards of 200.
Add to that point, we added a new point because the, if you look on the top, we added Elementary and Secondary Education Act standards. Because those are more realistic than the association standards. So if you look at the blue chart, you've got the top, which is your ESA. Your bottom, which is the National Association of Recommendations, and then the white is the FCPS. And they are, they are more national trends than, than the associations.
I wish we had one counselor per every 250 students. But I would be curious if any surrounding jurisdiction, or maybe even any jurisdiction in Virginia that meets that standard.
I know when we did our reorg that we benchmarked around surrounding districts and found that we were fairly comparable. And so that was the reorg in 2009, 2010. And I felt like we were fair, fairly comparable, but we need to do that again as we look, look at this, so I can bring those numbers back to you.
And this would, might be an area for further discussion another day. Because in my view, this also points to the need to do more partnering. And just like this coming weekend when we're having our, our conference. And we've talked about trying to partner with other nonprofits and other agencies in the community. I mean, clearly, this is an area where we, we can't do all the heavy lifting on our own, and we shouldn't.
I think that there's also a $1 million item in the county budget around mental health for adolescents. And without that item, we would be hit even more severely because they are putting that in specifically for contract services for our kids who we can't meet their needs. And they, there is, there was too much of a waiting list on that side. So that's a really important item for us because we were not able to, we should not be meeting those needs, and there was too long of a waitlist on that side.
I think Ms. Reed will hopefully give you another chance. Mr. Velkoff? And I don't have any else on the waiting list, just so you know. So we'll be going back to Ms. Reed unless somebody else raises their hand.
Okay, since I was hearing about the high school counselors and their workload, I just want to throw out a thought I've had, which is, what would their workload be if they were not responsible for the college application letters? Because I think that's a substantial piece of it. So what if we were to outsource those college application letters and let them focus on the actual needs of the kids? I just want to throw out a trial balloon, and you can all think about that.
I, you know, I think that the main, what we have is complex job tasks needing to be done by these folks. So we're asking them to implement the Ask-A Model and Apply for Ramp, which is a fabulous school counseling model. And we're asking them to see students and look at individual needs, and we're asking to do college letters because they know they're students. And so you're going to suffer in any one of those areas. However, currently, you know, you could look at some tasks being done in different ways, and I think that's where we have to look. As Dr. Presidio and I have talked about this, we know there are not resources coming to increase drastically numbers. But we do have to look at the work that they're doing so, and how they do it.
Okay, and Ms. Schultz?
On the $1 million on contract services that you mentioned, what are those services? And what are, is that covering a gap that we weren't providing or?
It's covering a gap the county wasn't providing. But it helps us because our psychologists were trying to support those kids when they weren't getting services as quickly as they needed. And so they need a more intense level of support. And so that, when they looked, when we met with Skip and we had our work groups, we identified the gap. And we jointly agreed that that was an important gap.
So are these, are these students who are in, on campus? Are these homebound or?
These are a variety of students. They could be in school needing individual support. They could be in county programs needing a family wraparound kind of service. They are, but they are students.
So it's not providing an alternate education. It's just providing the services. And then if we could go to, I think it's 1.8, yeah, 1.8. The infractions, there's a note there that it's a 39% decrease since 2009. A 39% decrease in what? In the number of infractions we're recording?
State-reported infractions.
State-reported infractions. Now, have the state infractions, which are required to be reported, changed during that time? I thought that, that we've seen a couple of things that got changed on what we have to report.
So I think we'd have to put that as a question for next steps to get more information. Because we've been tracking this and some of the, I don't think they're big categories that have changed. Because they're the most enormous categories.
Egregious.
Egregious categories. So, but I will put that as a, to see if any of those have changed over time.
I mean, I'm curious as to what's behind that because that's a pretty startling statistic. That you've had effectively a 40% drop. And what we have to report to the state. So the question is, what, what's precipitating that? Is it that we've, we're, we're not having the infractions?
Well, I think, I think go back to, it's, it's for, it's infractions that result in short-term and long-term suspensions. And as we've been following this over the years, we did feel like there was an increase when we implemented PBA. So we felt like more schools were approaching behavior tiers of intervention than were in the past. And so that was one of the things that we were looking at. We were looking more at a proactive intervention stance rather than a reactive discipline stance. So that's one area that in the past, we've kind of attributed the decrease to.
I mean, to have a 40% decrease in infractions, I mean, would almost to me be, I mean, nationally historic level setting that, that we've done something so profound to have a 40% reduction. So, you know, I, I don't know what we could get in terms of additional information and what the breakdown is on that. Particularly because of the continued highlighted disproportionality that appears behind those numbers. You know, I'd like to know, you know, I don't see anything about the disproportionality in the, in the monitoring report. And I don't see anything that says what precipitated such a significant drop. And I, I think that prior to your time, Dr. Garza, I spent a lot of time asking for like a monthly, you know, stat report or quarterly or something. And we never really got that. So I, I don't, this isn't, maybe a little bit following up on with what.
I think there's also other places.
No, we absolutely do not, Ms. Smith.
I think there's other places that this information, so you get a report on the hearings office.
Right.
And you also get other times where within goal two, there's also discipline breakouts in that. And so I think that that's the problem, that this is a departmental OE.
Okay.
And there are other places that this information exists.
So, yeah, so maybe that's the problem, is that it's, it's disaggregated across a bunch of different reports.
Right.
And so.
Because I'm going to be talking about disproportionality in the SRNR report. And so I think some of the things are, this is looking at, you know, this is hard for me, in fact. Because learning environment goes across all clusters, all departments. And this is a snapshot of how we work on it. But it's not all the work that I do or my folks do in our department. So here, we're just trying to capture some of the discipline. And we're also putting it with our PBA. What are we doing about learning environment is what the OE is about.
Well, and, and I guess that's, I guess that's the inherent question is what are we doing about the learning environment? What has happened in a learning environment that has precipitated a 40% drop? And, and I just, I don't know where that information resides. And if it's in another OE, then maybe that's a different government issue.
I think it's important also to point out that that's over five years that change that was spoken to. It's on page eight of the actual more complete report. It shows that it's on an incremental basis to change over time. I, I think it probably does go to more support, more strategies at the campus level. But I think we can talk more in depth about it when we get to the SRNR, but.
But we also have a much larger student population, you know, since 2009. So, so it makes it even that much more startling.
I would call your attention to initiatives in progress because there is the work of the department, positive behavior approaches. We've been training more schools around behavior intervention, 600, 800 every year, behavior management training, mentor works, peer mediation, a big push in restorative justice. So that's where the work of the department of the office is, out-of-school support. And so the other work, the other data comes in other places. But if you're looking at the work of the office, it's there.
Okay. I have nobody else. So Ms. Reed? I didn't see your hand up. Okay, no, we, do you? Okay, we just, we have like five more minutes. I just want to keep us focused. And the beauty of having the SRNR today is that some of the stuff does tie back in.
Right, true.
You've got me longer today.
Somebody want to go before I do a go-back? No? Okay, and I'll, I'll, I'll be brief. Following up on the, the data about the inadequate sleep that our kids are getting. And again, this is something I brought to your attention in advance. I wonder if we have thought about kind of a, a comprehensive policy or communications strategy that would tie in all the different initiatives related to the issue of sleep, such as homework load policy and implementation. We've, we've heard about technology, how kids use that too late at night and then can't get to sleep. I mean, there are probably lots of factors and variables involved. And I just wonder as a system whether we might think about how we can communicate, you know, those issues for kids to be more healthy. I mean, it's, again, it's fragmented, I think, in a number of places, but I wondered if you could comment on that.
I think it is fragmented. However, I think the beauty of pulling off the conversation, community conversation on stress very quickly means that we're bringing all those topics to, to the table. We have a section on homework. We have a lot of panels with students talking about how they feel. And I feel like it is a first step. And from that, the next steps that will become issues and trends in here will develop. Because we cannot leave there and say that we're done. And so I think we've captured the concern, the breadth of the concerns, but we will just begin to touch them on the 17th.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin, then Ms. Evans.
Thank you. First of all, I feel better about this report, just in terms of, I think the measures themselves were very specific, and you answered them. So in that regard, the report, I think, brings. So in that regard, the report, I think, brings forward what we would hope to see. I do hope in our next session, when we talk about what we want our measures to tell us, I still sort of keep pushing back a little bit that I'd like it to be collaborative between staff and the board. And I think maybe that's one of the things we haven't done is we keep doing everything in isolation. So we have the conversation among ourselves, but ideally, I'd love to see the collaboration with all of you to say, you come forward with measures and we actually have the dialogue and say, I'm not sure that captured what I wanted. But I did want to draw attention to what Ms. Schultz raised in 1.8 under discipline because, as you know, that's something that we've paid a lot of attention to and we're happy to see the direction this is going. But I think it's really important to point out to my colleagues, if you didn't look at this a little more carefully, I find that the numbers actually are concerning to me still because when you actually break out the percentages, the modified expulsion to suspension rates over time in the last four years from '09 to '13, it's only 5%. So, you know, we've done really well in short-term suspension with a 41% reduction. And I think that's great. It tells me that PBA is probably working well, the whole restorative mindset of our principals. Do we need to suspend or can we do something that keeps these kids in school? So that's a great number.
Part of what we're going to be talking about today in the SRNR is changing some of that too. So--
But, but as a monitoring report, I just think it's important for us as a board to really be looking at, was Ms. Schultz asked the question, what are we doing differently? Well, technically speaking, we've had, we've seen a drop in long-term suspension and short-term suspension. That's controls at the principal's level. But we've only seen a 5% change at modified expulsion to suspension. And that's my understanding. That operates at the hearings office level, right?
That's kind of why I wanted to defer some of it to this afternoon because some of it is state mandated, et cetera. So if we, I know we're going to have a richer discussion.
Right. But I thought the hope, this is where, I guess, we're going to have a little bit of the pushback and why I feel badly for all of you guys spending time on these reports. Because as what you've come to see is a board of 12 will spend less than 45 minutes talking on a report that you give once a year. So I know that we're under time constraint and maybe it's also for--
This isn't helping.
--our chairman to understand, but I, this is now my third year on the board and I say the same thing every time. We don't, why are we rushing through these reports?
I would defer to our chairman on that.
Then I feel like all I did is just raise my hand to say--
We can have a separate conversation about that. But is there anything else on this particular topic that you wanted--
I guess I would just like to know if Dr. Dockery wants to comment any further on what I stated. Do I have an accurate, is that an accurate assessment that where our improvement has been in 1.8 is what's happening at the decision-making level with our principals? But we haven't necessarily seen that kind of change because 39% looks really impressive. But then when you look at the 5% that's being done at the hearings office level, then am I accurate to say there's two different things going on?
I think the most important thing is to reflect on what Mr. Stork said. There are some things that were state mandated. And so there are some things that you're required to move forward on and some things. So I--
Yeah, the reason I was doing that is, is I think maybe Mr. Stork was directing my question not in the correct way. So you're answering it correctly to a certain extent. But as we all know, including from the former, you know, Virginia Board of Education Chairman Eleanor Sasse-Law, the law specifically allows this school division to take any extenuating circumstances it wants and to modify and change. And what that statistic of 5% shows me is that's not happening. Or their feeling is there isn't any extenuating circumstances.
Well, I think you are going to see some talk about that this afternoon in our SRNR conversation. But I think, to your point, breaking this down to where principal discretion and central office discretion is what you're thinking might be useful to look at the actual trends.
Yeah. But did I, but I did I read your report correctly that you did actually break it down where principal discretion is versus here, the central office discretion is? Because the principals, they refer an expulsion case, the modification happens at the hearings office. And what it's showing is they're not modifying hardly anything. But the principals, meanwhile, had discretion on short-term and long-term suspension and we saw a real decrease in their, in those numbers.
I think before we rush to judgment--
Yeah, yes.
We'd have to, we'd have to look back at how much discretion was allowed from shifting from an expulsion then to a suspension by policy, which is in the SRNR. So I think that begs--
Let me get it broken down a little bit better.
Yeah, we probably need a little bit more information about what's included in that category because I don't want us to rush to the wrong conclusions. So let's get some more information on that one.
Yeah.
And we may even be able to illuminate a little bit this afternoon potentially.
Well, I will just conclude my remarks, Mr. Stork, by saying that we began 2008, 2009 with 246 modified expulsions to suspension, and we finished the 2012-13 year with 233. So there really wasn't much modification going on there. But I, I think we'll get to know, right, we'll get to know more, but I'm just saying that's, it's interesting to point out. But it is very interesting to note that over a five-year period, we saw changes at the school-based level, not at the hearings office level in terms of the numbers.
There's a lot--
The decreases are happening, but they didn't happen there.
Plus, the numbers are much larger in all those other categories. So the number of students to decrease makes a larger number, so.
And we have less flexibility on the expulsion side. That's all.
But I will get a breakdown of that.
Okay, thank you.
We do have flexibility. Let's be clear.
We, we, yes. Ms. Evans?
Thank you. And my first question is to Mr. Stork. Did I understand you that we're going to, in a future work session, we're going to schedule that? Is that a next step?
It was, depending upon what our outcome was here. If people, if there's enough left over that we should do that, then we can, we can beg the chairman--
I would urge that because there's just so much here. You know, there's, there's great information and--
Maybe it ties back into some of the SRNR stuff, which we'll do later. So maybe, why don't we wait on that?
Okay, we can wait.
Because in the SRNR, we're going to have it all kind of come together to some degree with this.
I guess I would, I would urge just to have something separate on wellness because it's such an important area. But thank you, Dr. Dockery, particularly for straightening out the monitoring on the sleep issue. I appreciate that very much.
Thanks for your persistence. Thank you.
Yeah. And with the, whatever we have, a minute left, I did just want to say, one of the things that I do think is wonderful about these monitoring reports is it really does show so many things that we're doing that we might not even, you know, focus on or be aware of. And the executive functioning project team, I didn't know we had one. I'm delighted to see that we do, and I'm not going to ask you about it now. And just, you know, the resiliency project, of course, is excellent. You've been doing that for years. I guess my one question then is going to be, I saw a reference to the Wellness Task Force and somewhere in here, and I'm not putting my fingers on it anymore, but in like 30 seconds, can you give us a, what the Wellness Task Force, you know, where they are and what they're doing? I realize that's a great big area and a broad question, but--
Which one are you?
Well, that's what I'm saying. You know, there was a reference in here, as I say, I'm not putting my fingers on it. If that's a surprise to you, then I need to go back and find where the reference was and I can get back into you about that.
Well, I just met with Chris Gwer, the Chair of Shack, and where they're working on their recommendations around a school, I think that's where you're talking about--
Oh, that's a reference to Shack. I see.
And that's a reference. And that report will be coming forward--
Right.
--because we just went and worked through that.
Yes.
And I think that's where that's coming--
That's the reference. I understand.
And it, and it has quite rich work in it this year.
Okay. Excellent. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Strauss?
Just, just a quick note. There is a national trend whereby students actually are behaving better and are behaving better. There are fewer, fewer instances of extreme student misbehavior. And actually, the trend is approving, improving most rapidly among minority students. But obviously, we're concerned about our own kids here and how we impact our own children in schools here. But there is a broader nationwide trend. Now, the question is whether or not it's going to continue to decline or plateauing. We don't know, but--
And I will tell you, the one place that that is different is at five, six, and seven-year-olds. I discussed this with Mr. Stork.
Right, exactly.
We have a trend of extreme behavior with five, six, and seven-year-olds not found eligible for special education. I'm looking at having to have maybe one of my first contract classes for small children within our school system because of the severity of the behavior. So it is increasing--
Exactly.
--with five, six, and seven-year-olds, but decreasing in the other categories.
Exactly. And that's what I say. We don't know what's going on with the youngest ones. It's also have mental health issues appearing at a much younger age. And what are we going to do?
And a lot of that based with the work we're doing with Fort Belvoir and a lot of it based on three tours of duty and different, there's a lot more mental health issues.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. I had just two things. Anybody else that needed to, felt compelled to address anything? Okay. Mine was, first off, the executive function, I was very pleased to see that. I am interested in kind of where that's going, but I don't need a report now. The out-of-school support, and I know we have a budget item. How do, are these connected at all?
So we will be talking about that with the SRNR in terms of the students that we were supporting would be supported in a different way. So there would be money coming back from the use of that, of the out-of-school support back to that project. And so I've been working with Ms. Quinn on that.
So the two will tie together?
They are tied together.
Thank you. With that, we will go ahead and have the motion. Oh, we need the next step. Sorry. Thank you. I don't know if I heard any next steps. Anybody?
One.
No, go ahead. Bring it up. Colleagues, any next steps that--
Let's see what--
And then we'll have the motion. Then we're going to go to the governance work session and hopefully we can move that one along. And eat? Eat? Really?
Yeah.
We need to do that? Next steps, provide more specifics about state-reported discipline infraction information related to measure 1.8. I think that's, yes. Yes, that's actually, thank you. That's a question I asked when we were having the conversation for the meeting itself. Thank you. I'd forgotten about that one. Anybody else have any other next steps?
No.
All right. We have a motion on the table to accept the learning environment slash treatment of students' operational expectations monitoring report. All those in favor of the motion, please signify a raise of your hand. I see unanimity. Wow, I'm going to take that. Thank you. Motion passed. And we now go to governance.
No, we go to lunch and then to governance.
Oh, you're not doing--
Oh, no. We're taking a little break. I got to move this body. How about if we come back at 10:02?